Evening, I now call to order the May 23rd, 2023, meeting of the Marion County School Board, and mirroring and modeling the way our students begin each day if you would please join me with a moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I'm requesting everyone in the audience, please remove their hats and turn off their electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. I will now ask Dr. James to read our board commitment statement.
We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, and individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will leave a legacy of success.
Thank you, Dr. James. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of Marion County Public Schools, or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item, or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach-colored form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student disciplinary matter, please complete a lime-green colored form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 PM. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Allison Campbell, District 1.
Here.
Ms. Lori Conrad, District 2. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3. Ms. Nancy Throer, District 4.
Here.
Dr. Sarah James, District 5.
Here.
Filling in for Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent, Chief Financial Officer Teresa Boston Ellis.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. So, Ms. Teresa Boston Ellis, welcome this evening.
Thank you.
Would you please introduce those giving us tonight's inspiration and pledge?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to ask Dr. Danielle Livinggood, the Director of Secondary Curriculum, Instruction, and Digital Learning, to come forward and introduce our special guests, who will lead us with the inspiration and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, Dr. Campbell, board members, and Ms. Boston Ellis. We have some remarkable student athletes to recognize this evening. Our Coordinator of Athletics and Activities, Mr. Donnie Tucker, will share a few words and will introduce the students to you.
Thank you, Dr. Livinggood. Good evening. It's a great honor to stand before you tonight and present these student athletes that have excelled in the classroom, as well as for their respective teams and schools. Each of these athletes standing before you tonight represent great character, sportsmanship, and high academic achievement. First person I want to introduce is Ms. Megan Griggs. Megan will be providing our inspiration and leading us in the pledge tonight. Megan is a senior at Forest High School. She won the Academic All-State Award for Section 2 of the Florida High School Athletic Association. She is one of twenty-four athletes across the state to receive this award that recognizes her hard work on the field, in the classroom, and in the community. She is also up for Scholar-Athlete of the Year for the State of Florida, which will be announced at a banquet that takes place this June. Megan competed in the FHSAA State Golf Tournament, where she finished eighth overall. She also competed in the state Weightlifting Meet and was a standout for the Forest High School Girls Lacrosse Team. Megan carries a 4.87 GPA and is the FHS Valedictorian for the Class of 2023. Megan will be providing the inspiration this evening, and she will lead us in the pledge. Ms. Megan Griggs.
I'm just gonna be putting this down a lot. Okay. Well, good evening, school board members. My name is Megan, and I was a senior at Forest this past year. And as Mr. Tucker already announced, I am the Valedictorian Female Sportsman and Scholar-Athlete of the Year at Forest, and I can't wait to attend Florida State University this summer. And something I learned in high school that I plan on taking with me throughout college is the importance of work ethic. Because I'm pretty small, 4'11" if we round up, in case you were wondering, through all my years of competition in different sports, everyone seemed to be bigger and stronger than me, and I constantly had to work extra hard just to be on their level. The main sport I played for a while was golf, and more recently weightlifting. And something I really loved about it was that I got to be as good as I wanted to be. I didn't really have a coach or a certain team that I would practice with all the time, and didn't have a new required practice routine or workout schedule typed for me every week. I had to make my own and then have the discipline to go out and do it. It took a lot of hard work, but it taught me so many life lessons. Soon, work ethic began flowing into other areas of my life. Working hard in sports became working hard in school, and then working hard to be the best person I can be. Life is similar to this. There's not really instructions that tell you how to do all the things, but you have to determine what you want, and how you want to work for it, and how you're going to get there. Thank you, everyone. Now, if you'll please stand with me for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Megan. All right, the next person I'd like to introduce to you is Ms. Haley Davis. Haley is a sophomore at Forest High School, and she is this year's 3A Girls Golf State Champion. This was her second appearance in the state tournament, where she finished second in her class as a freshman. She has been playing golf for eight years and travels all over Florida and the US, competing for the Florida and American Junior Golf Tours. Haley carries a 4.258 GPA in the classroom. That's Ms. Haley Davis. The next person... Go ahead. The next person I want to introduce is Ms. Ashley Sampson. Ashley is a junior at Forest High School, who won the Class 3A Swimming Championship in the 500 Freestyle. She has been swimming since the age of three, and is a three-year letter winner on the FHS Swim Team. In addition to all her time spent in the pool, Ashley also maintains a 4.5 grade point average. Ms. Ashley Sampson. If you all would like to take pictures with these three before we introduce the rest of them. Thank you, ladies. All right, the next person I want to introduce is Mr. Antoine Hampton. Antoine is a junior at North Marion High School. He won the state championship this year in boys' weightlifting. Antoine also, I believe, participates on the football team. Come on up here. Are you on ROTC? No, okay. I'm just making sure. I don't want to leave something out. Antoine is, like I said, he's a junior. He did win the state championship in Class 2A Boys Weightlifting for his weight class, Mr. Antoine Hampton. Finally, this last group of folks that I want to introduce is the Class 4A Baseball State Champions this year, the North Marion Colts. Thank you, Antoine. Man, they're still coming. Perfect. Yeah, he can stand up there. Okay. These young men are led by Head Coach Dale Hall, who has held that position for the last nineteen years. The Colts had a stellar year that saw several firsts accomplished along their other accolades. They were the first state championship in any sport for North Marion High School. They were the first baseball state championship team for a public school in Marion County history. They touted a 27-5 record this year. They broke the record for the most wins in a season, longest winning streak in school history, the first number-one power pole ranking in school history. Cooper Jones broke the record for most home runs in a single season. They were the district champions, regional champions, and they have six seniors that are committed to play baseball in college. Cooper Jones, College of Central Florida, Hunter Jones, University of Florida, Carson Lindsay, South Georgia State College, Michael Long, East Georgia State College, Ross Ray, South Florida State College, and Jake Tompkins, Daytona State College. They boast a team GPA of over 3.0, and Carson Lindsay was also the TB20 Melden Law Scholar-Athlete of the Year finalist. North Marion Colts Baseball.
So, board members, I would normally ask you to step behind these. We're not gonna do that, so do just find a place, and we're all just gonna have to scoot in, just how it's gonna have to be. Oh, I assure you, everyone's in the picture. Here we go. Everybody's looking right here, and one, two, three, a couple more. Stay right there. Count three, everybody. Inhale, and that way we'll all be closer. Here we go. One, two, three. Great job. Congratulations.
You guys wanna just hang out over there? They're gonna say something. Or y'all wanna just sit right up here? Or something, just... Yeah, y'all can go after them. They're gonna say something.
Yeah, they're gonna tell, they're gonna say a few words. So, just listen for a few minutes. Sit there for a few minutes. They're gonna talk. They're gonna talk to y'all, just for a few minutes. They're gonna talk to y'all.
So, I know that was a little backwards than what we normally do, because normally we take a picture, we come back up, we take another picture, but this time we just stayed down because we had so many amazing student athletes that we wanted to recognize. First of all, to the ladies, Megan, Haley, and Ashley, all not only representing Marion County Public Schools at the state level, but all representing Forest High School, and representing powerful women everywhere. Congratulations to all three of you amazing ladies. So grateful. And I want to say a special shout-out. Thank you, Megan, for your inspirational words, especially showing that mental toughness and fortitude that it takes to be a student athlete, and that really exemplified, I think, a message that all student athletes carry with them all the time, even if they're on a team or not. It's important to have mental toughness to ensure that you are doing all that you can to perform in your individual sports, whatever that might be. Antoine, amazing, I don't know if you know he's still here, but amazing job with the... Oh, I see him there. Okay, sorry. All kinds of people in North Marion Colts colors out there. With Northside Pride, we had a huge showing tonight from Northside Pride. So, Antoine, congratulations for your amazing state title. And then, I was just telling all of these gentlemen who just brought home the title just a few days ago, how exciting it was to follow them, and watching Twitter and score updates, and seeing what was going on, and just super, super proud. You have definitely shown Marion County proud, and Marion County pride, as you're showing Northside Pride all over the state. So, thank you so much, guys. Board, I certainly want to open it up to you if you have any additional comments for these folks.
Congratulations. We're super proud of you.
Very proud.
I'll say our chair said it best, you're already legends.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that was good. And that was, was it Megan?
Mm-hmm.
Megan, stand up again. Did y'all see the guns on her? She's talking about she's small, but she got some big guns on her.
Little, but she's mighty.
Congratulations, guys, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you, student athletes, for representing us well. I see Ms. Sales getting up. You don't really have to stay for the whole meeting if you don't want, but we would love to have you participate if you want to see what a school board meeting looks like. And with that, we'll continue the rest of our board meeting this evening. We would now like to take the time to recognize donations. See ya! As we clear the room.
Good to see you.
As we're waving at parents that we know out in the audience.
They have Baccalaureate at six.
Oh, yes, please. Okay, Baccalaureate is starting in fifteen minutes, so...
Drive carefully.
Drive carefully, and enjoy that evening. Such an important event. So, again, we would now like to take this time to recognize donations sent from several gracious individuals and organizations. Seven thousand dollars to Marion Technical College from the Summer Glen Veterans and Patriots Club for scholarships of seven students, and fifteen hundred dollars to Marion Technical College from Jordan Janner Memorial Scholarship Incorporated to support the scholarship for a student enrolled in the firefighter EMT program. The donations to Marion Technical College totaled eight thousand five hundred dollars, and we just want to say thank you for the generosity to this school, and to Marion County Public Schools, and the school community. Thank you so much for those and their generosity. Ms. Boston Ellis, would you like to make a recommendation on tonight's agenda?
Thank you, Chair. I recommend approval of the agenda for the May 23rd, 2023 year. School Board Meeting with the materials in the board packet, those materials distributed to board members at the meeting, and the audio recording, including as part of the official record of the meeting, with the exception of items D-191, D-192, D-193, D-194, D-195, D-196, D-197, D-198, D-199, D-1910, D-1911, and D-1912, that have been placed under discussion, and item C-163, that has been pulled and placed under discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. May I have a motion on Ms. Boston Ellis's recommendation?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings, second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the March 28th, 2023 School Board Meeting?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. I will now ask the school board's attorney to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board this evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at this evening's meeting, either regarding one of today's agenda items, or a matter directly relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. This evening's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting, in the order received by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, Item 6, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child, unless a statement is provided twenty-four hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrative staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students or their families are also strictly prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Board clerk, do we have any speakers this evening?
We do. We have four, starting with Mark Avery.
Good evening. My name is Mark Avery, A-V-E-R-Y, and I am the President of the Marion Education Association. I represent the teachers of Marion County, which happen to be the largest single-body group of employees in the district. The last time I spoke here, I was supporting teachers against a mob and their misunderstanding about the books in our classrooms. This time, I'm supporting those same teachers, but against those that are supposed to be supporting us. I'm here to discuss the comments that were made by the board at both the last board meeting and the following work session. Although I said board, I'm not blaming the entire board for one individual's comments, but as it was stated in the rules, you cannot identify individuals. It was read earlier tonight, and at each board meeting, that part of the board's mission or their beliefs are that they should demonstrate respect. Yet during Teacher Appreciation Week, on Teacher Appreciation Day, instead of constant praise and uplifting comments, the board bashed teachers on multiple levels, first calling into question their character, and questioning how they treat students. Next, there was a statement about teacher evaluations and their correlation with student outcomes. All of this on Teacher Appreciation Day, the day that we are supposed to praise all the hard work and sacrifices that teachers have made all year to help our students to be successful. If that one day was not bad enough, at the recent work session, the board doubled down and tried to state or support their comments by stating that principals believed in what they said. There's a time and a place to discuss evaluations. We have a contract where evaluations are listed in there, and they're negotiated by the two sides. Are they perfect? No. Can they be improved? Of course. But on Teacher Appreciation Day, that's the day we choose to air this to the public? I'm not sure about that decision. There's discussion about discipline of teachers. That's also in the contract, and there's very specific rules about that. And we have a department totally dedicated to ensuring that our teachers have the highest standards, and follow those highest standards, along with the Professional Code of Ethics, that all the teachers in our district are expected to follow. Again, I've been contacted by numerous people that those comments should not have been made on that day in this forum, and they were very disappointed by the action of the board. And again, I repeat my, point you to my first statement about that I'm not blaming the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Avery.
I'm sorry, I can't read the last name, but Glenn F.?
Fiorello. Welcome, Mr. Fiorello.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members. I'm Glenn Fiorello, and this is more of a follow-up from the last time I was here to discuss Good Friday, some things that may help you make a decision, and a little more clarification as to where I'd like to see us go. I understand you cannot change the approved school board calendar. That's already set in stone, but I'm more or less talking about the future, and I'd like to see it voted on currently, not wait till two years from now, or whatever the case may be, so when I know we can put it to bed. I'm asking to have the item on the agenda to make it a school policy that the schools are closed on Good Friday, not an extra day off, but maybe tied in with spring break, or something along those lines, so we're not having another day of no school, and an additional day of no school, let's put it that way. I'm also asking that all the school flags are lowered at half-mast on Good Friday. The Declaration of Independence talks about all men are created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator, and Creator spelled with a capital C, just like Jesus Christ. When you mention Jesus Christ, it's a capital J and a capital C, and He is our Creator. So, with that being said, I'm not sure if any of you were present when the county adopted a policy to close down, shut down, in respect for Martin Luther King. I know you can't acknowledge that, but I was. There was no lobbying done. It was one, two, three, and it was approved. Now, Martin Luther King, as good as he was, he can't create, he can't do any of the things that the good Lord did in regard to dying on the cross for us, showing our love for us. So, we could take a day off for a gentleman like Martin Luther King. I think we should be able to at least do something like this for Jesus Christ, our Creator, and why he died on that cross on Good Friday. I don't like to say this, but I've got a feeling our nation, our state, and our county's becoming godless, and if we don't start doing something before long, I won't be able to ever in public make the sign of the cross. I won't be able to attend churches. So, this is just one little baby step to a large amount of things we're gonna have to do to change, to get us back on track. The other day, and this is the last one, the other day our governor came to Ocala to discuss a major business coming to town. I don't know if any of you were there, or were invited, and that's what I was afraid of, some of you were there. I'm sure the governor's office has a staff assigned to help schedule the event, notify the dignitaries and the media that he'll be in Ocala. For the governor's office and all those wanting a selfie with the governor to take... For the governor's office and all those wanting a selfie with the governor to take center stage over the good Lord on Good Friday is disturbing. He came to town on Good Friday. No one, and I repeat, no one should take center stage over the Lord on Good Friday. I take exception to that. And I supported our governor. Past tense. Whatever the reason, it's unacceptable. Maybe they forgot it was Good Friday, didn't care, or whatever the reason. So I'm asking you to make sure Marion County, which we used to say was in the Bible Belt, shows respect for our Lord. We used to say that. Where do you live, Marion County? That's in the Bible Belt. That wasn't that many years ago, maybe forty years ago. For some, maybe forty might have been a lifetime, but that's what it was. That's what it was. You know, this, we're asking this out of respect for our Creator. He was tortured, died on the cross for us, and resurrected three days later. And that's when Easter comes into play. And that's when we celebrate. We celebrate Easter. This is out of sorry and out of respect for our Lord for the Good Friday. Because the higher-ups in government do not take the good Lord's death seriously, there is no reason we cannot lead by example and show respect for the good Lord on Good Friday. That being said, I'm asking for y'all to put on the agenda to make policy that it will be closed on Good Friday. Schools will be closed on Good Friday and flags will be lowered at half-mast. And do it in a manner that it's continued. We don't have to bring it up every year to revoke this. And do it without encumbering another day off with pay. I'm hoping you will work with us on this. And if, I know if you're not allowed to ask me any questions, but if you'd like to be my guest, hopefully you'll make a decision in the right way. And whatever comes of this, I want to let you know one thing. I will not be disappointed one way or another. I know it's like to sit in that seat because guess what? I was one that sat in the seat when we approved Martin Luther King's day off. And it went like that. Nobody lobbied us. There was no discussion. It was approved. It was either nineteen eighty-eight or eighty-nine. So I'm not asking to do something that's out of ordinary. Just reenact what we used to do. I don't think that should be that difficult, but it's up to you all. And I thank you for allowing me the time to discuss this with you. If any of you want to get with me after I discuss it, I'm a phone call away. And I do thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fiorello.
You're very welcome.
Regina Brown.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you for hearing me this evening. I'm going to read, I wrote out what I have to say because I bunny trail a lot. And I get emotional about what I say, so I'll try to stick to the topic and just read it. On April twenty-fourth, Joe Biden, speaking at the National and State Teacher of the Year Conference, stated, "There is no such thing as someone else's child." Our nation's children, all, are, are all our children. The president's press secretary, speaking at the GLAD Awards Ceremonies, echoed her boss. This is not just rhetoric. It's not a warm, fuzzy thing to say at a press event. They mean it. They mean it with every tax dollar that flows into this district. They mean it with every CRT mandate, with every SEL, the social emotional learning mandates, and with every so-called gender-affirming care mandate. Jill Biden stated at that same event with the president, "Message matters more than ever." I am here to correct the record. I believe that every loving and responsible adult cares about children and how they are treated. It is this love coupled with our beliefs that prompts our actions, our policies, and legislation. But here is where I, and I believe most parents, differ from the president. Children belong to their parents, not the government and not the collective. They are a gift from, from a loving God to their parents. Parents are given sole responsibility over their children with the authority to delegate that responsibility as they see fit, such as to a teacher. The delegation of authority is the formal grant of power, responsibility, and authority to someone else. It, the, that, when you delegate that authority, your child comes under subjection to whoever you delegate it to. The subjection is the bringing of a person or people under the control of another. We can see this in the education process. The parent delegates to the teacher. The teacher accepts that authority and the student submits to the teacher. The president's rhetoric and actions do not line up with this. The government now believes that they are the authority. And they want and demand both the parent and the student to submit. And I might also add, they want and demand that the school board submit. This worldview came into light in the past election, maybe two ago, with Democrat candidate Terry McAuliffe, when he insists, insisted that parents should have no role in directing the education of their children. And he subsequently doubled down on that. The parents of Virginia firmly rejected that notion and gave him a permanent summer vacation. Our children are given to us by God. God delegates authority to us. Our children submit to our parental authority. The majority of the biblical references regarding education clearly fall under the authorities of parents. But the principle of delegation still applies. So yes, parents may delegate that educational responsibility to someone else. But as in the case with every act of delegation, the one who accepts that delegation, in this case, the teachers or the board or the government, is still ultimately responsible to the one who granted the authority in the first place. And the granter, the parent, parents, listen to this, is still ultimately responsible for how well the one to whom they granted that authority, how well they fulfill that obligation.
You have thirty seconds remaining.
This is vitally important to understand. The parent is never absolved from the ultimate responsibility of their children's education. And the educator is never relieved from being responsible to the child's parents. I want to leave you with this. As you consider your responsibilities here. Most of our board ran on a conservative or, or a Christian message. And we have a pastor who is on, on our board who's often called Reverend.
Your time has expired.
I should have talked faster.
Thank you, Ms. Brown.
Narvella Hayes. Haynes.
Narvella Haynes. Haynes, H. A. Y. N. E. S., twenty-nine sixteen, Northwest Third Terrace, Ocala, Florida. To each of you and your respective seats, first, I would like to start out by thanking each of you for the service you provide. I know your job isn't an easy task. And you have a lot to deal with even when you are trying to make the best choices for all. Tonight, I have several questions. One, I would like to know, are administrators held to the same standards as teachers when going to a low-performing school? Because when Evergreen was going through transformation, they could not take on any teacher that was not highly effective and there was a certain VAM score they were required to have. Question number two. When a principal is demoted, who determines where he or she goes? Number three. Does the principal that is receiving that person have any input? Four. When a school administration is dismantled and new administration comes on, who, who chooses the team? Does the new principal gets to pick his or her team, or is it done by the district?
Ms. Haynes.
Yes, sir.
Please go back through them questions.
Question number one.
Slower, slower.
Oh, slow. Question number one. Oh, I, I was scared about my time. It's going to run out. Okay.
I'll, I'll award you thirty seconds of additional.
Okay. Question number one. I would like to know, are administrators held to the same standards as teachers when going to a low-performing school? And I gave an example. Question number two. When a principal is demoted, who determines where he or she goes? Question number three. Does the principal that is receiving that person have any input? Question number four. When a school's administration is dismantled and new administration come on, who chooses the team? Does the new principal gets to pick his or her team, or is it done by the district?
Thank you.
And I know you can't give me an answer now, but is there any way this will be addressed and answers will come back?
We can have you follow up with an administrative staff member after.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Haynes.
And if you'll hold on one moment, Ms. Haynes. We know whom would be best to.
Mr. Frazier, would you mind speaking with Ms. Haynes, please? Thank you so much.
It would be Mr. Frazier, Ms. Morant.
Is Ms. Mor, and if Ms. Morant can join you as well? Sorry, if she's here. Is she in the back? I don't, I'm not sure if Ms. Morant is here.
Those are personal questions.
They are, but the recommendations.
And Board, to be clear, I just wanted to make sure that since we were asking her to repeat her comments, I gave her the additional thirty seconds. Turned out she didn't need it. She had two full minutes remaining, but that's why I did that.
Thank you.
And thank you to the area superintendents for, appreciate that. While I understand those are human resources questions, the area superintendents make the recommendations. Board Clerk.
Or complete.
Thank you so much, and thank you to all of our speakers this evening. Board, items under seven point one, seven point two, and seven point three are for information only as new board policy six, three, four, five says the superintendent is authorized to approve and execute any construction contract change order that will increase the construction contract amount by twenty-five thousand or less or that will decrease the construction contract amount. For information only, the construction of a security fencing at Donnellan Middle School, change order number one, work authorization number five, project twenty-two dash one, one, one. Also noted, the HVAC upgrades to Howard Middle School Buildings thirteen through sixteen, which is change order number four, work order authorization number three, project twenty-two dash one, zero, five. And also re-roofing of Building six B, Bellevue Santos Elementary School, change order number one, work authorization number fourteen, project twenty-one dash one, zero, one. And perhaps in the future, we might be able to collectively say how much those deductive change orders were. So for the, while we're reading off all those numbers, let's go ahead and do a lump sum of the deductive change orders. Thank you. So may I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C nine point one through C eighteen point three, with the exceptions of items, D nineteen point one, D nineteen point two, D nineteen point three, D nineteen point four, D nineteen point five, D nineteen point six, D nineteen point seven, D nineteen point eight, D nineteen point nine, D nineteen point ten, D nineteen point eleven, and D nineteen point twelve that have all been placed under discussion. And item C sixteen point three that has been pulled and placed under discussion. May I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings.
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. Item D nineteen point one. Ms. Boston Ellis, would you please introduce the member of the team who will be speaking to this item?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to welcome our Director of Elementary Curriculum, Instruction, and Digital Learning, Mrs. Deb Riedel, who will provide information on this item.
Hi, good evening. I'm going to speak about an intervention called Lexia Core Five that we are using for second and third graders during the MTSS block. This program works on comprehension and vocabulary deficits for students in second and third grade. It's an adaptive blended learning program that accelerates, accelerates the development of literacy skills for students of all abilities, helping them make that critical shift from learning to read, to reading to learn. Lexia provides an instructional model designed to support teachers with the resources they need for face-to-face instruction and student independent practice. The program creates a personalized learning path for each student through an adaptive placement and scaffolded activities that align to state standards. Teachers are given a specific action plan for each student that provides small group lessons to scaffold learning, providing guided practice and corrective feedback.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. May I have a motion to approve the agreement first renewal with Lexia Learning Systems, LLC?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Reverend Cummings. Board, is there any discussion or questions for Ms. Riedel? Ms. Conrad.
Um, I just have a few questions, just out of curiosity. This is used for our tier two and our two-three students?
Correct.
Um, and is it used during MTSS?
Yes.
Okay. And so is the main portion of this program on the computer and then they go to small group?
It is on the computer and then the teachers can pull lessons to use in small group with students.
Okay. Thank you. I love that it individually tracks them and their lessons are specific to their learning needs. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Any additional questions or comments? Ms. Rower.
Thank you, and, and thank you, Ms. Riedel, for your clarifications. And this is three hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars. It was approved last year on June fourteenth, so we spent the money. And it sounds to me from a very recent departee from elementary that it was put to good use. The renewal amount is for the same amount, so it's nice that something didn't go up.
Yes.
Um, I'll be looking forward to hearing the return on this investment in terms of how students have done with it and, and feedback from teachers moving forward. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any additional questions or comments on this item? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five zero. Thank you, Ms. Riedel. And will you be speaking on our next item as well?
Yes.
Ms. Boston Ellis, I was going to have you introduce Ms. Riedel again, but.
How many of these is Ms. Riedel speaking on?
Just this one.
Yes.
The others are all in opinion.
Yep. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. So the next purchase is for Studies Weekly, which is a resource that supports social studies instruction in the classroom through the use of print and digital resources that include nonfiction text. Materials are aligned with social studies standards and include connections to language arts, arts standards, including building background knowledge, content area vocabulary, and comprehension strategies. The materials are presented in an engaging and enriching format which students can take home after classroom instruction occurs. This will strengthen the homeschool connection as students are able to share the informational articles and activities with family members and continue to practice reading skills at home. Studies Weekly incorporates activities and informational videos that are referenced in our elementary curriculum maps and include live links which make it easy for teachers to access.
Thank you, Ms. Riedel. May I have a motion to approve the First Amendment with Studies Weekly Incorporated? Motion by Ms. Conrad.
Second.
Second by Dr. James. Board, do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Riedel? Ms. Conrad.
Um, I want to say that we've used Social Studies Weekly for a very long time. I enjoyed using it as a teacher. I did want to ask about the timeline. A lot of times it comes in after school starts. Has that been corrected at all?
It should be, because we're getting a jumpstart on it this year. We started the contract back in April, so we're approving it hopefully today. So we should have those materials in time for school.
Terrific. I also wondered, is, is it our only source for curriculum for, for elementary education?
It's, it's the main source that we use for social studies. But if you look on our curriculum maps, we have other resources in there as well for teachers to pull from.
Okay. What, do you, can you give me an example of what those might be, some of those extra resources?
So our program specialists use our reading series as well. And so anytime any resource that we have access to is aligned to the benchmark or the social study standard, they will embed that in the maps. So it could be anything. It could be Readworks articles, something from the Savis Reading textbook. just anything they find that's directly correlated to the social studies standards. They can link that in the map for teachers.
Okay, all right, I was just, I was a little bit concerned about providing enough resources in social studies, and we've been using this particular magazine for a very long time. And again, I did enjoy it, but I don't necessarily know that it fills all of the curriculum needs. So that was just my concern. And my concern with going back through the reading program is that just gets very complicated, because if that's not the text you're, or unit you're on in reading, it is very hard to pull a standard in something that your kids haven't read yet, you know, if it's further into the unit. I thank you for explaining that to me. I just, I want to make sure we have enough strong curriculum for our-
Yeah, our goal in the curriculum department is always to make sure that we're teaching to the depth of the benchmark or standard. So we will pull in whatever we need to pull in to make sure that that happens, so that there isn't a part of a benchmark that doesn't get taught, if that makes sense.
Yes, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments, Board? Vice Chair.
Thanks, I circle back to the money, because that's a huge part of why we're sitting up here, and I do notice that the original agreement amount was a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars, but that was not approved until September thirteenth of two thousand and twenty-two, so that answers the concern about making sure that this is going to be ready and available. And we also use the whole portion, all of that money, and that this First Amendment increases the amount by two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so from a hundred and seventy-five to four hundred. Can you speak on that as to why the big jump?
Yep, the quote, when we asked, requested the quote, the price of the materials increased. It did go up quite a bit, but it did increase.
And it's also for a longer term now, if it's by subscription or something, because we'll actually be starting right at the beginning of the school year, hopefully, but that is a, that is a big jump, and I'll just lump that with the Lexia. I look forward to hearing how the kids really did with it, and the feedback from the teachers, and whether we're getting that return on investment. Sounds like it's been well received, so that's a great start.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice-
And aligned with the standards. Yes.
Thank you, Vice Chair, any additional questions or thoughts for Ms. Riedel? I just had one, because Vice Chair Thrower and I had the opportunity to be a part of a We the People presentation in an elementary school, while we've seen them in middle schools.
Stealing my comment from them.
I'm sorry. Well, we're talking social studies curriculum right now, and when Ms. Conrad is talking about Social Studies Weekly being a longstanding part of our curriculum, it does make me wonder if we have opportunity with We the People to further expand into lower grades at elementary, as well as to multiple schools within the district. I don't know what that curriculum costs, but I can tell you it certainly was eye-opening and awe-inspiring. So that would be the comment I have there. Any additional comments or questions on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. Ms. Boston Ellis, would you like to introduce the member of the team who will speak to discussion items D nineteen point three through D nineteen point twelve?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to welcome Ms. Donna Kidwell, the Director of Exceptional Student Education, to provide information on items D nineteen point three through D nineteen point twelve.
Thank you, and good evening. So the items D nineteen point three through D nineteen point twelve represent contracts with multiple agencies from which we contract therapeutic services for our students with disabilities. Some of the agencies only provide, perhaps, for example, sign language interpreters, while other agencies can provide sign language interpreters, OTs, PTs, or other SLP, speech-language therapists. So we do, even though some of the therapists work part-time, when we are putting the contracts together, we allow for full-time employment for all of our therapists in the event that other therapists resign, leave the district, leave their contracted agency, and then we can increase a part-time person's hours accordingly, if needed. Also in the contract, we allow for extended school year services to be provided, both in June as well as in July, because over the past couple of years, we have differed in our summer schedule, and we don't want to have numerous amendments to have to come before you. So we have a wide range there in each of our contracts with our agencies, but we hope to fulfill our obligation for our students and find all of the therapists necessary.
Thank you, Ms. Kidwell. Since we do have several different motions that I'll need here, we'll have to approve each one individually. I'm going to ask if we have any questions for Ms. Kidwell on any of the motions that we're going to move forward with. Do we have any questions about any of them? Vice Chair.
So this is just a quick comment for those keeping track at home. These have been coming through to us at our meetings lately, and it is routine, and it is an acknowledgement of our kids with special needs and their individualized needs, and the specialized personnel that it takes to serve those kids. So I'll be ready to vote yes on each motion.
Yeah, we just had, thinking the last board meeting, three of these came forth. So we are making the investment in taking care of our students, especially our students with special needs. So I'm in the same boat. This is Vice Chair Thrower, ready to vote on all of them.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Kidwell. So may I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements with Citrus Hearing Impaired Program Services Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. D nineteen point four, may I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreements with Community Rehab Associates Incorporated?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Florida Visually Impaired and Blind Services LLC?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower, second by Reverend Cummings, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. Item D nineteen point six, may I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Hands Up Communications Incorporated?
So move.
Motion by Ms. Conrad, second by Reverend Cummings, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement Leaps and Bounds Pediatric Therapy Incorporated?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement for occupational therapists?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower? Second by Ms. Conrad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. Onto item D nineteen point nine, may I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Princeton Staffing Solutions LLC?
So move.
Motion by Reverend Cummings?
Second.
Second by Dr. James, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Sign Language Interpreters?
Motion.
Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conrad, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Special Communications LLC?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Vice Chair Thrower?
Second.
Second by Reverend Cummings, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. May I have a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement with Speech Language Pathologists?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Conrad?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. Onto our item that is now D sixteen point three. Ms. Conrad, I understand that you pulled this item and wish to have further discussion.
I did, thank you, Chair. When I came onto the board, there was some discussion about getting more information as we lose staff members, so that we can improve the retention of our staff. And if you watch board meetings regularly, I'm usually the cheerleader up here. I'm super excited, there's a lot of great things that are going on in Marion County, but there also are some, there's some room for improvement. And so it was concerning to me that we had over a hundred and four resignations. You know, getting staff and getting teachers, it's very difficult right now. So I was concerned when I saw that number, and I wanted to find out where we were in identifying why our teachers are leaving, why our non-instructional staff are leaving. And so I requested, I just got them this afternoon, and I'm just gonna be honest, I didn't have the opportunity to really go through them with a fine-tooth comb. But we are working towards improving the exit interview process, and so adding some areas for comments, and more specific information for why a staff member chooses not to be part of the Marion County team. I do want to request, I would like to see or get a copy of these exit interviews. I just, I would like to know why people are leaving. And I'm sure, you know, we've got some that they've had a change in their family structure, they've moved, there's things like that. I just want to make sure that there's not something on our end that we can do to improve the situation, so we can keep the people that we have. And so that was why I pulled sixteen point three, so we can hopefully further improve our hiring and retention process here in Marion County.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items twen-
I had someone-
And we're gonna have discussion when we have the motion on the table, thank you. May I have a motion to approve the personnel items twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Thrower, Board, discussion? Reverend Cummings.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad, for pulling this one. When we look at the personnel packet, it is a lot of resignations, movement, moving pieces within the district. I too asked, I was, I think I was the one that asked, when you came on the board, about there being some type of tool that our HR department personnel will use in tracking why people are leaving, why there's a mass exodus. And when you look at this, it's a mass exodus from top, it's throughout the district, throughout the district. And I think that we definitely need to get some type of report periodically on why this is happening, so that we can, so the district can kind of come up, formulate a strategy to stop the bleeding. Because when I look at this, well, this looks like we have a lot of bleeding, that we're hemorrhaging really bad, and we need to figure out how to do that, because the only way we're gonna have better student outcomes is that we have the right people in these classrooms, in these positions, whether they're instructional or non-instructional, because I'm seeing from food service, bus transportation, throughout the district. So it's not just teachers, so thank you for pulling that. Ms. Conrad.
Any additional discussion, Board? Dr. James.
I also want to thank Ms. Conrad for pulling this item. I think one of the trends that we see too is while this is a significant amount of people, leaders on our campuses will acknowledge that it's not gonna stop here. The resignations and retirements will continue throughout the summer, which are positions harder to fill than the positions, even though these are hard to fill, it only gets harder to fill as the summer goes on. Ms. Morant, bless her and her department, they have done tremendous work to improve what we are doing in that department within Marion County Public Schools. Ms. Morant and I often talk and chuckle because it, I tell her a Marion County story, and I've only lived in Marion County for ten years, but somehow I know a lot of Marion County stories. And I'll tell her a story about a personnel historical item, and she'll chuckle, because it seems like it might not even, how could that possibly have occurred? Yet it did. And she has lots of turns in our road and forks in our road to correct and course correct. The exit interview is a prime example of that. And there's still room for improvement. She and I spoke recently about if your supervisor completes your exit interview with you, but you are resigning because you maybe are uncomfortable with your supervisor, is that necessarily the best manner for the exit interview to occur? So there's rooms for improvement, and Ms. Morant and her department, I think, are very aware of those, and so it's tireless work to continue to find those areas of improvement and then adjust course. So, you know, I, to the people leaving Marion County, I just want to say, you know, you're gonna be missed, and I'm sorry that this isn't the right place for you. And my prayer would be that maybe you would circle back to us after a brief break, because we would more than likely have open arms for you to come back, so that's all.
Vice Chair.
Thank you, yes, and thank you, Board Member Conrad, it's on all of our minds. The reasons for leaving are often as varied as the individuals themselves. And for those of us that have been around a long time, you know, you build relationships with people, and it's easy to find out, you know, why people are actually leaving. And so I'm all for finding the patterns and adjusting our practices, and my hat is off to Human Resources, just with the recruiting fairs and the acknowledgements, and so many things. It is a tough, tough market right now, the field of public education, and the vast majority of fellow long-term colleagues that I hear from. There's a couple of things in play. One of them is the ability to work remotely and remain in education. That's a game changer, and that is a challenge that we've never had to face before. One of the other huge ones is a person can only work for so many bosses, you know, and there is a wide scope of oversight that teachers are having to deal with and manage. And I've never seen a climate like this before. And I feel confident that it is a phase. Although it is a very difficult phase, I am confident that Marion County Public Schools will continue to pull together, find ways through this to overcome it, and the folks that choose to remain in traditional public education, if you can even call it that anymore, will begin to choose Marion County over any adjoining county, because we're doing it right. So that's certainly my quest and my goal, and as, just speaking as Nancy Thrower, District Four, not gonna rest till that happens, you know, our kids are too important, you know, and if not us, then who? So if there ever was a time to come together and be really authentic and honest about our challenges, and also potential solutions, this is it, let's go.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thrower. Appreciate all of the Board comments on this item this evening, and thank you, Ms. Conrad, for pulling it so we could have robust discussion about it. I was with Ms. Morant today, talking about some of this, and potential strategies and solutions on new recruitment tactics as we're looking at what lies ahead in this packet this evening, so thank you. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion passes five, zero. Now on to meeting reminders. There will be a special administrative briefing and work session scheduled on May thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, at one o'clock PM, and following, a special administrative briefing and work session on May thirty-first, at nine o'clock AM. Also making special note that we do have a special board meeting this week as well, on Thursday, where we will be discussing the superintendent's evaluation. At this time, we'll go into committee reports and comments and concerns. We will start with the Board Clerk's office.
Yeah, I just have one comment. For the next topic on our agenda for student disciplinary matters, we have two students that are gonna speak off-air. One of those students, J D two, three, one, nine, zero, is not here, and I have been told to let you all know and include them back into the vote.
Which number was that?
J D twenty-three dash one, nine, zero.
That will be included back into the-
That will be included back into the on-air vote.
Correct.
Got it.
And that is all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Yes, I just have one time sensitive item that does require your attention. As you know, we have a contract with Alfred Benesh Consultants for them to deliver a long-range plan impact study. We've been paying them under a contract that we had, had used last year. That contract included an in-person presentation to the Board. Because there's a lot of data, we believe that it would be appropriate for, and I've been in touch with Mr. Hurley and Ms. DeBick regarding this, for there to actually be a consultant available to speak to you on two days. One of them is the first day, May thirtieth, and that was included within the price per contract. There, to have the person there to, for consultancy the second day, it's a minor additional charge, but I need to amend the contract in order to do so. Because the overall contract was over the fifty thousand dollars threshold, even a small amendment to it does require Board approval. So when I have the numbers finalized, I would just like to ask that the Board give consensus for the Board Chair and Superintendent to sign off on the small additional amount to be added for the second day of consultancy fees. We're probably talking one to less than two percent of the total contract price.
Board, discussion?
Yes.
Dr. James?
Did the contract include how long the presentation would be or how long they would be available for?
I, I am not aware.
So presuming our work session was at nine AM instead of one PM, the presumption could be that they would present morning, we would take a lunch, and they would present in the afternoon, and there would be no additional charge?
If those presumptions are correct, then yes.
So then I would say if the amount of work is the same over the course of the two days, why are we getting charged more?
I, I don't know whether it is the same amounts, or, I think we have, there's going to be, there's going to be questions that are likely to be from the Board on day one that will need to be interviewed and answered into Board Two.
I under, I understand the, the, the way we scheduled it and the reasoning behind it. My question is, if their amount of time available to us is not changing, one percent of what the amount is, a hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I think that that, it's worth a discussion. I, I'm.
Yeah, are we paying for a hotel room? Are we paying because of flight changes?
I mean, I, I just believe that there's a, I, I can't speak to it. I don't know enough information. What's been presented to me is that because, in, within a normal budget year?
Right.
Or within, if we're all falling within the same budget year, then because of a PO, we could just come back to the Board and show what that was after the fact. Because of the fact this overlaps into a second budget year, this is a secondary purchase, which is added on to a larger contract. I don't know the details as to how much time was allotted, I haven't looked into that, for an in-person consultancy. It would normally be within it the course of a single work session, which might be, you know, a few hours. But I would have to ask for, if Ms. DeBick or Mr. Hurley, he know of anything more, or I'd have to go back and review the contract. I was here tonight simply to request that, that given those concerns or any concerns you may have, for the Board as a whole to express those and then delegate to the Superintendent and the Board Chair to make that decision so that it can happen, approval of this additional amount.
So would it be possible, and again, we're asking questions we may not be able to have the answers to this evening, but would it be possible for them to be in person for one and on the phone for the other? I mean, if, if we're paying hotel rooms or mileage or whatever we're paying, I mean, a thousand dollars extra is, is going to be an interesting amount to pay after what we've already gone through.
Correct. I'm personally, from a business perspective, I would not tolerate that at all. Sarah James is a business owner. Like, we have waited this long, we had to put ourselves in a time delay because of a planned vacation out of the country that they had. I am not interested in personally entertaining that.
Any other thoughts from the Board, Vice Chair?
Yes, I would say that if they needed, because we had more questions, and they needed to stay overnight and a whole nother day or whatever, then they're also having to make adjustments for us. I, I like the idea of answering questions via phone or, or things like that. We know this Board goes deep, and that there's a very solid chance that we're going to want that second day. While I appreciate the sentiments and, and wanting to save money, the, we want to make sure also that what we're talking about is, is related. You know, we're, we're now down to presentation, presentation time, presentation money, time is money. So if we're asking them to come for a day, then we need to keep it for a day. If we're going to ask them to then suddenly stay another day, you know, as a business person, I'd be like, you're going to pay me. Because now my time that I've given to other people on my calendar, I have to now adjust. So, you know, apparently they let us know in advance that there was vacation out of the country or whatever, and, but to just on the fly say, well, you didn't answer enough of our questions, so we want you back for a second day, well, that's great. But I feel like a little bit of a heads up, or we need to make a decision as a Board, you know, what we're going to do, so that it's not on the fly. So the phone conference thing could be a nice way to level this out. I'm open to other suggestions.
Dr. James?
Can we just make it all day on the thirty-first, then? I mean, because the reason we're delayed starting on the thirtieth is because we have other district retirement events that I think it's important the Board attend. So can we not commit to a twelve-hour day or however long it's going to take on the thirty-first, and we start at nine AM, and they do their presentation, we take a lunch, we think up our questions, and then we keep on kicking at it until the cows come home?
That, that would be my vote.
That would be my vote, too, and.
Mine, too.
Chair.
Yes.
Ms. Boston Ellis?
If I may.
Please.
Hopefully I'm not incorrect, but they have another engagement that morning, and that's why we're starting at one. It has been suggested that maybe at your special board meeting on Thursday, we bring back answers to you in terms of what other options may be, if that would be acceptable.
That is acceptable to me. So on Thursday, we can wrap up this discussion and have consensus or not. Board, are you amicable to that thought process, since we will all be together in two days from now to make a final decision?
That's for me.
Thank you.
And just for clarification, I'm not sure that I understand. We have a work session on, at one o'clock on the thirtieth, which they will be presenting. And then we have a work session also the following day.
Yes, at nine AM.
At nine AM. And the proposal now is to do what exactly?
To bring back answers on the twenty-fifth, your special board meeting this week, to bring back answers or possible alternatives to what was, what, what you recommended today.
Okay.
If that would be acceptable.
Right. And the only other thing I would have to say about that is that we have, the work sessions need to be noticed seven days in advance. They're, they're noticed, but the times would be changing, so we'd have to alter those. And I would need then permission of the Board Chair to alter, to advertise alternately on our website to do so.
Well, we have a work session at nine AM regardless on Wednesday, so it doesn't have an end to time.
Right.
So.
For Wednesday, right.
And we can't change Tuesday's time. We could just cancel Tuesday's meeting presumably, but we, we can't change the time because the time is set from the company. So there's, I don't think there's a change in the horizon. It's a matter of how long we work on Wednesday.
I'll inform Mr. Hurley and Ms. DeBick and try to coordinate with them to find out what we do next. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Ms. Boston Ellis, do you have anything else for us this evening?
Just on behalf of Dr. Gullett, I would just say congratulations to all of our, our seniors, twenty twenty-three. We had graduates on last Saturday, three schools, and beginning tomorrow, we have graduations through Saturday.
Thank you, Ms. Boston Ellis. Dr. James?
Good evening. I want to begin tonight with a huge congratulations to Coach Hall and the North Marion High School varsity baseball team for their state championship win over the weekend. What an incredible game that was, and they're bringing home the state title for the first time in North Marion history. As Mr. Tucker shared, this team had a lot of firsts for not only North Marion, but also for Marion County. I'm so proud to represent the North End. My husband was a North Marion Colt. My, well, every James on the North End was a North Marion Colt. And I got to watch the game with my husband and a dear family friend who played baseball together for Coach Hall, and it was, it took me back to those good high school memories where you, you win a state championship, and it just feels so great. And my husband and his friend were just ecstatic and so excited for North Marion. So that was a really great memory for me to make with my husband and to watch North Marion do for this county. Sticking with the North End, I want to congratulate two ladies who were Board approved tonight as permanent Assistant Principals. First, Stephanie Hall for her placement as Assistant Principal at O'Callaghan Springs Elementary, and Tina Roberts for her continued placement as Assistant Principal at Reddick Collier Elementary. I want to say congratulations to all of our graduates this graduation season. So far, I've been able to watch the graduates from Hillcrest, Bellevue, and Dunellen cross the stage, and I'm so proud. I look forward to the rest of the graduations this week. We have some pretty great kids in Marion County who are headed out into the world to do some pretty great things. I had the pleasure of attending the Hillcrest Art Show last week and proudly purchased two pieces for my children. The Alice in Wonderland theme was beyond impressive. I genuinely thought I was somewhere deep inside Disney World. It was that cool. This year was the first year it was open to the public, and Ms. Manressa shared that next year it may be even better. So I would encourage you all to go shop and see the amazing artists we have at Hillcrest School next year. Recently, Board members were all briefed individually on an overview of the findings of the Long-Range Growth Study and the district's plan to address our overcrowding needs. I am very grateful that we have two board meetings, maybe one, next week to review these findings and publicly begin discussing our plans for the future. One of our speakers tonight shared about parental rights and the trend at the national level to delegate these rights away from parents into the public school system. I want to assure this county, this board member is a fierce advocate for parental rights. It is the primary message I ran on last summer to sit in this very seat. My values are aligned with the majority of the parents in this county. If you are a parent who has felt like your voice is not heard, or you're struggling to advocate for yourself or your child, email me. I'm available to you at any time. There are some challenging conversations ahead, and we, as we discussed, district staffing, growth, future plans, but I feel confident that we are ready to tackle anything that comes our way. I want to wish each of our students a safe and fun summer break, and can't wait to see them all back on our campuses August tenth. You have three more days. Please make good choices and think before you act. You got this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Reverend Cummings?
Good evening, everyone. Again, congratulations to the North Marion baseball team on that championship, but to all of our scholar athletes that were here tonight. It's, it's good to see kids that are able to do, to multitask and do things on the field, but do equally as well off the field. And I'm, I'm appreciative, so appreciative of that because it gives an example to other kids that you can do mo, multiple things at one time. So congratulations to all of them, to the coaches, those parents. Congratulations to our class of twenty twenty-three graduates. Hillcrest always kicks it off well, and it was truly a remarkable graduation ceremony at Hillcrest. But as well, for the ones that happened on this Saturday, that was Bellevue, Westport, and Dunellen, equally, equally is celebratory for all those students. I want to encourage those that are happening tomorrow, Lake Ware, and North Marion, Vanguard Forest, those are the ones that we have to finish. And then we also have MTC that's going to be coming up in a few weeks as well. We want to congratulate those graduates as well and encourage them to, to celebrate responsibly, to be safe. Enjoy this, this, this moment in time, because once it's gone, you can't bring it back. So enjoy it responsibly and enjoy, make sure that you're, you're doing it safe. I'm grateful for all the staff that put together our graduations, because there's a lot of work into staging these graduations and making sure that it's a memorable event for the families and the students as, as well. I, I, that's one thing you won't ever forget, you won't forget your graduation day. You won't forget your graduation day. So be responsible. Tonight, we, we heard several different speakers come forth, and Mr. Fiorello, we heard you. I heard you before you even said it, because I was one of the ones that, when we were talking about our calendar, addressing the issue with Good Friday. And it was at one point when, many, 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 many moons ago, when I was a kid, it was standard practice that we were off on Good Friday. That, that was just, it, it always, I don't know why, it just seems like it always lined up, that spring break lined up with Easter. And we were off for Good Friday, we came back after Easter. Times have changed, but I am definitely interested in that conversation and seeing if we can work that out, because many of the points that you made, very valid points. And it, it was a time that we did do it that way. So hopefully we'll have some more conversation with that, with that, and this Board will be in agreement to doing something of the such. One of the other speakers, Mr. Novella Haynes, brought forth some comments about, ask some questions. And I, I, I asked the questions, what were those again? Because I, those are very valid questions that I've gotten many, many times. And I know that we, we didn't answer the questions as a Board. We did not answer those questions. We sent them to Mr. Frazier. But I do want to say Board, I think those public, those questions do deserve a public response at some point, because those are questions that I get regularly, very regularly, on when things are moving pieces. And sometimes we, we, yes, the individual gets a response, but the question is still hanging out there. And so at some point, I think we do need to address those questions in the very, very near future. This, this next thing that I have is, I've kind of been doing some, some research and looking at some things and looking at some policies that we have, that we implemented, because I've been getting some phone calls concerning our policy with the books and the removal of books from our library, our, our classroom libraries and things. And I know we went through Neola last year, we came through, had some specific Neola policies that this district had already set up. And I remember a few years ago, Ms. Thrower, you were on the Board with me, where we even had some challenges with some books. And those challenges came through, and we followed the process, and it was resolved. I'm concerned that maybe with what has all happened and what's been going around the nation, that we may need to look at what we do, what we're doing right now, is concerning to books. Are we following the processes? Are we following the policy that we implemented? And is that policy still in line with the current legislation? Because if we violate our own policies, then we are putting ourselves in bad situations. So I want us to have some conversation about, because in that past practice, Ms. Thrower, that it came to the Board for us to review. There was a recommendation that came to us. And we talked about that. We currently have a lot of books that have been removed that this Board has not had the conversation about. So we need to make sure that we're following the processes and the policies that are already implemented, so that we're not putting ourselves, this district, our staff, because the staff are the ones that are, that are handling this thing on a daily basis. And we don't need to put them in jeopardy of losing their certifications, their licenses, or anything of the such. So I want to make sure that we're doing it in accordance, and that we crossed all our Ts and dotted all of our Is. And finally, school's going to be out in the next couple of days. I want to encourage our young people as they enter to summer break. First, I want to tell them to finish strong. Last year, I noticed, the last few days of school, we just had kids just cutting up and fights all over the place, and just, and it carries over. Just because you, let me, let me give you this for free. I sound like, I sound like I sign on Sunday now. I constantly give a lot of stuff away for free on Sunday. Just because you get in a fight on the last day of school, don't mean that you won't have a disciplinary action. You will still have a disciplinary action if you fight on the last day of school. You will still have a disciplinary action if you fight on the last day of school. Um, it, we, we need to make sure that, uh, we finish strong academically, strong in our behavior. Um, I want to commend the group that's at, uh, Fort King, dads on duty there, they're over there doing some great things. And I want to encourage some of the other groups. I know some of the pastors in West Ocala, we, we were at Howard last year on those last few days of schools. And I want to encourage other community members to do the same thing, to make sure that these kids finish strong without the discipline, without the fights, without the melee's and all that kind of stuff. And go into the summer break, um, thinking about what they just accomplished and the things that they have to accomplish in the future. So, um, we, we know that summer school is going to be out there. Parents, you should have already contacted your school about summer school. But let's go into summer break, um, and have a great summer break. But let's not forget the task at hand for our staff, our students, all of us, is student outcomes, positive student outcomes. And if we do that, the district is going to change. Those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you, Reverend Cummings. Ms. Conrad.
Good evening. Um, I want to start out again a little repetitive, but, um, one of the blessings for me is in the journey of education is being in the classroom for such a long time and then seeing, um, the benefits, uh, that student, of students and their successes. And tonight was one of those, uh, for me. We had three great ladies, uh, come from Forest High School. I had the privilege of teaching Haley in first grade, and she was a super little student in first grade. And it's just so exciting to see her, uh, here tonight and doing so well academically, um, and athletically. Uh, and I just want to reiterate that the journey continues, learning continues. No matter what grade you are in, uh, that you continue to learn and move, move forward. Uh, so I just want to, I wanted, wanted to take a moment to celebrate that, uh, because we have so many great success stories right here in Marion County. Uh, graduati- graduation season has started. Uh, it was an exciting time for me. It was, um, the first time I've been part of, um, the team. And so what I loved about it each graduation was very different. And you could see the relationship that the principals had with their students. And, and that's what I loved about it. I loved that, uh, each school was celebrating the uniqueness that they found in their students and in their faculty. Um, and it really, it was hot, but it was a joyous, joyous occasion. And I am, I feel blessed to be able to be a part of that celebration. So kudos to all of those students and kudos to all the staff. So much work, um, that goes into putting those events together. And I also, I'm, I'm really grateful, uh, the people that, they made it very simple and, and very easy for us as a board. Sorry, I shouldn't speak for the whole board, but for me personally, uh, and going to seven different graduations. And, um, they just made it very doable. And so I appreciate the time and effort that went into that. So thank you. I continue to be surprised and thankful for the donations that come from our community. Um, just so grateful that our community is active, uh, different groups. Next year and where it is going to be located, um, as we work out the kinks to how that's going to look for us here in Marion County. Because I do think that is an area we have a lot of growth that we need to work on. I think it can be better. My other concern actually came forward, um, this week with several teachers. And so, um, looking for information for them, I thought I didn't have the exact answer. So I would go to our school, our district website. The information wasn't easily found there. And so I had several conversations with several different people. And, and I understand the reasoning that they shared with me. But it didn't change my concern, uh, for the information on our district website to be the most up-to-date, um, information available to our students and our staff. So this board member feels like any new information, um, that is presented should be posted on our website. Because I feel, for me, that's, that's my go-to. The first thing I think, well, if anything's going to be up to date, it's going to be our district website. And so in particular, I'm talking about, um, this situation was a calendar. I hope that it's an easy fix. But I would love for our, our students and our staff members to be able to go right to the district website and find a calendar that tells them exactly, um, what they need to know. Um, so that's an important piece for me, and I look forward to further conversation, uh, about that. And last but not least, summer is right around the corner. Um, being a teacher for twenty-seven years, I have to say, please, don't sit and do nothing over the summer. Please make sure you're going to the library and reading a little bit each and every day. Don't let you, don't be the student that has summer slides. So make sure that you're reading and participating in activities, uh, each and every day. Of course, we want you to be safe, um, have a fun and safe summer as you finish out the year. And we're looking forward to seeing you next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Conrad. Vice Chair Thor.
Thank you. And, and yes, it is the miracle of May when all of the hard work and perseverance pay off in those walks across various stages. It might be a little bridge to go from pre-K to kindergarten, or it could be the big stage where you're leaving Marion County Public Schools as a high school graduate and going on to your next step. And it always crosses my mind when I see kids cross the stage. I think to myself, what did it really take, you know, to get them there? And our speaker tonight, Ms. Brown, really resonated with me because, you know, if, if kids could raise themselves, they wouldn't need parents. And I feel blessed to have the opportunity to have partnered with so many parents, um, throughout my career and work together, not only to celebrate all the great things, but to pull together when the going gets tough. And to do all that we can as, as a school district, um, to support our parents and our families. Um, not all kids are blessed, you know, that they get to even live with their parents these days. So the, the challenge and the struggle is real. But I think about the commitment that we make. We take kids now as early as age three. And we keep some students now until they're well into adulthood, age twenty-two. We have kids at Hillcrest School, which is all kids with significant special needs that are very well-served. And I was just at the Marion County Jail today, and it's, it's the big jail. It's where kids that are minors, that are going to be charged as adults, they're there. And there are teachers there that are providing educational opportunities, no matter where our kids are and everything in between. And that is certainly something to be commended. And it's also a reminder, I think, to give to the whole community that when yours, when your school district, your public schools are spending all of this time, all of this money across all of these age groups, we need as many people as possible to be there for the kids. And having the families and ideally the parents that brought them into this world, be there first and ongoing advocate is the most tremendous blessing you could ever give to your child. And I'll be the first one to admit that while we'll continue to try our best, we are no substitute for that family unit. And I think it's high time this summer, if we're going to focus on anything, let's focus on truly being a caring community. Maybe consider having a virtually social media-free summer. And let's get back to being with each other, being for each other, and showing our kids the examples that we expect from them every single day, that we discipline them for, that we write them up for, so to speak. Well, if the parent and family leaders and we as school leaders aren't demonstrating that, then we're not going to be as great as we all want to be. So in this miracle of May, it's my hope and prayer that we keep that in mind and keep it at the forefront while we continue to provide the, the multitude of opportunities and pathways. A lot of parents don't want to send their kids outside of public education because they will tell you, where can my kid go and play sports? Where can my kid go and graduate with their associate's degree before they even walk across the stage and, and earn their diploma? It's, it's pretty amazing what the opportunities that are, that we have. And, and our special needs kids, you know, how they are provided for. So we have a tremendous amount of opportunities, and I think that we can all do just a little bit better, um, by working together and seeing each other and doing that for each and every child within our roles. And within our roles, I am so happy to report that I had the great opportunity to be with our, our board chair and also, um, Judge Leann Mackey, um, at South Ocala hosted us for the, the We the People Mock Congressional Hearings. And these are elementary school kids. And they were so articulate about the three branches of government. I mean, there's a lot of adults that probably can't say that off the top of their heads. The legislative, the executive, the judicial, the checks and balances. And, and kids that are far from being old enough to vote, were already talking about what they can do to be good citizens. They, they talked about working together, helping each other, not littering. That's a little shout out to the county commission and their littering initiative. You know, they, they heard that. Um, recycling, uh, teamwork. Uh, it was just so interesting to, uh, to be part of that. And, and it gives me the, the lift. You know, the lifts come at just the right time. When you start to feel really dejected, then, then there's that just-in-time moment, um, that I consider a true blessing. So I, I'm going to, to leave you with, with this tonight. You know, we have been through a lot the last few years, um, just as, as a community and, and as a world. It's, it certainly has become more complicated, difficult and challenging. But in the end, has it really? Because we all know what we need to do. We all know what kids need. They need their families. They need sane, rational adults. They need role models and they need champions. So I'm already looking forward to next year. That's all I have.
Thank you, Vice Chair Thor. So to begin my board comments this evening, I want to first say a thank you to Ms. Boston Ellis for serving in place of Dr. Gullit this evening. Thank you so much. It's always a pleasure to see you and have you with us. But as a reminder to those who are watching from home, the Commissioner of Education, Manny Diaz, called a meeting today in Miami where superintendents and other educational leaders were asked from around the state to attend. And this board asked that our superintendent attend. And so, uh, one of the items we were intending to have on the agenda this evening was to talk about our superintendent evaluations. But we have called a special meeting for Thursday so that we can handle that and that Ms. Boston Ellis has served in her place today very well, I should say. So thank you so much for joining us. I also want to say again, though I said it in the last board meeting, congratulations to Mr. Mark Vianello, who is heading to Charlotte County. He wasn't in the room the last time I said congratulations because he was outside taking a call from Charlotte County. Uh, but I wanted to say while he is in the room, congratulations. We're really excited for you, Mr. Vianello, and I know that's going to be a wonderful opportunity for you. I also wanted to say congratulations again to our student athletes. Whenever the team had planned to have student athletes do our inspiration and pledge this evening, we did not know that we would have a full team joining us because again, that team just won. Uh, and so it really was exciting to see all of our student athletes. And not only here, their amazing accomplishments on the field or on the court or on the course or wherever they might be, but also in the classrooms, they truly are making a difference and they are being wonderful examples for their fellow students. Today, the Public Education Foundation of Marion County, uh, had our monthly board meeting and wanted to give a shout out to one of the outgoing board members who is, has served as the current president this year, Gordon Glover. He's done an amazing job as president and, uh, he is actually going to be tying, uh, terming out of the board. And so just wanted to give a shout out to Gordon. And interestingly enough, whenever we received our tag art, whenever, um, the tax collector came and they handed a, Gordon's daughter was the one who was the artist for the tag I received. So I just wanted to say that, thought that was really fun. Also wanted to note that the board has a full calendar. Oh, wait, I did want to say one more thing about the Gordon Glover thing. Something that, um, Megan Magamal did today for him was to have one of his first mentees that he mentored in Take Stock from Pennsylvania livestream in to say congratulations and thank you and all of that. It was, it was just a really, really cool moment. So, um, Megan's so smart when she does things like that because we were all like, oh, that is so good. So, um, and also got a shout out that a couple of us have turned in our Take Stock in Children mentor applications, and they gave us a shout out today, those of us that have done that. So, uh, board, the board does have a full calendar in the upcoming weeks. I know I have already, uh, addressed that we will be receiving, or excuse me, we will be having a board meeting on Thursday about the superintendent evaluations. I did speak with Ms. Morant today. We will be receiving that or it will be uploaded. Uh, what she will be doing is to create a document that has all of our scores. Uh, so basically it'll go one point one and then all five scores, one point two and all five scores. So we'll have a document to use to drive our conversation on Thursday. Uh, go ahead and share this now, but I will share it again then as well. Uh, that the intention of that meeting is that we come up with a compilation board evaluation so that it will be one evaluation from the board for our superintendent. So, uh, that's the purpose of what we're trying to do. While all five of our evaluations will also be a part of the public record, uh, the purpose of Thursday is to get us into a compilation so that we can all agree on what certain scores would be in certain categories, and then we can go from there. So that if anyone were to ask the superintendent's evaluation, it will be the board's evaluation and there will be one document. Additionally, we talked some about our Impact Fee Study and the Growth in Marion County Work Sessions right now that are scheduled for Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh, then we have a work session next Thursday. We also have Friday is master board training. This is all next week. In addition to the graduations we have this week, and then the following week, the first week of June, is our Florida School Boards Association Conference. So I jokingly said this school board is basically going to be together almost every working day for the next three weeks. So we are going to get to spend a lot of time together. It's exciting, the work that your school board does. This is the school board of Marion County. I'm excited to be a part of it. But, uh, thank you, Vice Chair Thor, for talking about We the People. It was amazing to see those students at South Ocala and a shout out to College Park and South Ocala and their amazing teachers that got them prepared for that. Just a wonderful opportunity and wonderful engagement from all the classes and all the students. There were awards given, but honestly, it, it felt like that everyone was a winner because I feel like if, if those students are going to be leading this country in the future, we are great in their hands. Some of the professions that they had all chosen, because some of them introduced themselves saying, and I want to be this and I want to be that when I grow up, we're, we're going to be in really good hands. I also told them that if they're getting that as fifth graders, they should ace their seventh grade civics exams. So if they're already learning it now, that they're, they're going to be set up for seventh grade. So that was great. Uh, we have had lots of opportunities as individual board members, invitations that have been sent to us of different things that have, uh, been happening. And unfortunately, I did not attend the Hillcrest graduation. I had the opportunity of what I'm going to call hashtag school board mom because I'm having to attend my own children's events sometimes as well. And so I did not attend Hillcrest graduation, but their art show was spectacular. As Dr. James said, uh, the Alice in Wonderland theme wowed me. Uh, Mr. Frazier and I were walking through it together and trying to find the scavenger hunt items. And it really spectacular. They went above and beyond, and I can't wait to see what next year's going to be. And now that I know what I'm looking for, and now that I know how to, to function through that, uh, event, I'm, I'm even more excited for the future. So great, great work being done at Hillcrest School. Again, graduations and congratulations to all of our graduates. We have had a couple of graduations, uh, together as school board members, and we have a few more coming up. So I, I'm, I'm excited to see all of those graduates and what they're going to become in, in this community because they, they have amazing futures ahead of them. Also wanted to say thank you to our speakers this evening. Uh, we did have some very interesting conversations, uh, come out of some of that. I've had personal phone calls with a couple of those folks. I am just a phone call away if there's ever a question or a concern about anything. Uh, and I, I'm grateful for, uh, Ms. Brown and our conversation today. And hopefully, uh, a project that we may be working on together, uh, that would be amazing and, and potentially assist with recruiting in Marion County Public Schools. So thank you, Ms. Brown, for that conversation today. And also to Mr. Fiorello specifically about the, uh, Good Friday. I, I did want to mention that again. I know I mentioned it on Thursday, uh, but Reverend Cummings mentioned it as well. For us to have a discussion item in an upcoming work session to see if we would like to have Good Friday as a reserved day of remembrance on our future school calendars. I think, uh, I would be in favor of that. Reverend Cummings has noted that. I did want to see if there's consensus for us to add that to a future work session topic to at least have the conversation board and see where it goes. I see Ms. Conrad shaking her head. I see Ms. Conrad shaking her head, Vice Chair Thoreau. Okay, terrific. So we will be adding that to a future work session topic. Um, perhaps when we're just talking about calendar in general, if there are additional items that we want to mark on the calendar that we want to say, you know, moving forward with the next couple of calendars that are coming to us, then that certainly can be part of that conversation. Tomorrow is the Public Policy Institute Study. I wanted to make note of that because it's the unveiling of a nearly three-year study that's entitled "A Comprehensive, Coordinated, Community-Wide Child Development Study to Stem Youth Violence." Many folks who are current and former employees of Marion County Public Schools participated in this study. And the unveiling is in the morning. I'm excited to hear and see and participate in what that looks like and see what the recommendations are. Because the last thing I want to note is for those who pray in our community to pray for our students this summer. I, I'm interested in seeing what the research shows about stemming youth violence. But while some of our students will be participating in summer school or working summer jobs, some of our students are also not looking forward to the summer. Please think and pray for our students who are about to lose the consistency of seeing their friends and being with people who hug and provide them with a meal in a safe place every day. Some students are not excited about summer break. And so please pray for all of our students. Additionally, please pray for those students who still have just a few days left of school to make wise choices. We have three days remaining. Please finish strong. Please do all that you can. Make up any assignments that a teacher will allow you to do over the next two to three days. Retake any tests that you can. Please make wise choices. And again, I just encourage our community to please pray for our students this summer and all in, in public education. We could certainly use it. And those are my board comments this evening. So before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through April 28th, 2023. I also want to acknowledge that items 22.1, 22.2, and 22.3 all possess a, or all have incorporated in the record, a public-facing student discipline report. If there are ever questions about the, uh, alternative placement or expulsions of students and what those might be, there is a public-facing document that at least details what those disciplinary infractions have been. And Board Clerk, you have already identified that there are a couple of individuals that, or excuse me, one family that will be here to discuss their child's disciplinary matter. So with that, may I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students? J D 23 dash 0115, J D 23 dash 180, J D 23 dash 181, J D 23 dash 182, J D 23 dash 183, J D 23 dash 184E, J D 23 dash 185, J D 23 dash 186, J D 23 dash 187, J D 23 dash 188, J D 23 dash 189, J D 23 dash 190, and J D 23 dash 191 with educational services through the remainder of the 2022-2023 school year and the first and second semesters of the 2023-2024 school year. May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Dr. James. Second by Ms. Conrad. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes 5-0. At this time, the school board will go into a brief recess before we address expulsion matters off air. It is 7:25 PM. Thank you.